Twenty-seventh, two thousand twelve, at seven P. M. I'm Mike Meyer, sitting in for President Lois Weber this evening. Today, a tragedy befell one of our families in the school district with loss of a child in an accident. As we take our customary moment of silent reflection, we ask that you remember them in this difficult time. Mrs. Galante, please, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Fee? Mr. DeRose?
Here.
Mr. Croner?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Here.
Mrs. Randall?
Here.
And Mrs. Weber?
Excused. Members of the Wauwautosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. Is there anyone present who would like to comment on a non-agenda item? Seeing that there are no non-agenda comments, we will move into the scheduled business for the evening. The next item is approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda which Board members would like to remove for separate discussion and action? Seeing no such requests, the Chair will entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, Mrs. Randall moved, and Mrs. Milfeld seconded. Mrs. Galante, please, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Fee?
Excuse me, I believe we're required to have public comment on--
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for that correction. Is there any comment on the consent agenda from the public? Seeing none, now, Mrs. Galante, please, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. DeRose?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Tonight, we have recognition readings from Mr. DeRose, Mrs. Fee, and Mrs. Randall.
Thank you. Three students from West High School and one from East High School have been named National Merit Scholarship finalists. The four named National Merit Scholarship finalists are all seniors. West, Ellen Curtley, Natalie Mullins, and Alexi Utteck; and East, Tracy C. Johnson. The selection of approximately eight thousand three hundred National Merit Scholarship winners from the group of finalists is currently in progress. Scholarship winners will be notified in March. The National Merit Scholarship Program, started in nineteen fifty-five, is an academic competition for recognition and scholarships.
Students from Wauwautosa East and West High Schools and Longfellow and Whitman Middle Schools have won several Scholastic Art Regional Awards for two thousand eleven, twelve. The award-winning art will be on display at the Milwaukee Art Museum, March fourth, two thousand twelve. East High School seniors winning Gold Keys are Isabella Boupray for her photo portfolio, Mu Da for her three-D portfolio, and two for Zora Martin for art portfolio and jewelry. Winning individual Gold Keys were seniors Aaron Zarnecki, photography, and Raven Kosterzua, and I apologize, for photography; juniors Jillian McBride and Akeela Roberson, digital art, and Austin Woods, photography; sophomores Bryant Kimball in painting; and freshmen Sizley Bowman and Anthony Nash in drawing. Sarah Tremonte, a senior, and Hannah Jansen, a freshman, won a Silver Key in the photo category. East High School art teachers include Kelly Frederick Meiser, Kim Haller, Jim Smesert, Kathy Moss Reeves, and Barb Murray. Gold Key winners from West High School are seniors Megan Canfield, mixed media, Nicole Cunichello, sculpture, and Sammy Sandrin, photography; junior Jordan Lannis, mixed media; and sophomores, all in drawing, Talia Garido, Ben Ochloff, and Devon Voravong. West High School teachers are Jessica Belitch, Selena Maris, and Kathy Moss Reeves. Longfellow Middle School Gold Key winners, all in the drawing category, are eighth grader Sam Christensen, Matty Janisch, Taya Kraus, and Travis Olark, and seventh grader B. Leach. Eighth graders Maya Martin in digital art and Savannah Reynolds in drawing won Silver Keys. Longfellow art teachers include Megan Mackay and Michelle Seegert. Whitman Middle School seventh graders Rick Seer and Aaron Shout are Gold Key winners in the oil pastel drawing category. Eighth grader Jordan Pape won a Silver Key in the mixed media beeswax and paint category. Kathy Moss Reeves is the art teacher at Whitman. Wauwautosa students also received -- excuse me, honorable mention awards. Wauwautosa East High School honorable mention awards went to seniors Heather O'Keefe in photography and Sidney Rabishaw in mixed media; juniors Francesca Ludwig in photography and Eunt Powell in design; and sophomores Natalie Shudrowitz and John Serrano in drawing. Wauwautosa West High School recipients were juniors Kelly McGalligan in photography and Aaron Rittenhour in drawing; sophomore Rachel Polley in drawing, and senior Lydia Smertz in jewelry. Longfellow Middle School eighth grader Brian Stoffel received an honorable mention award in digital art. Founded in nineteen twenty-three, the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards are awarded by the Alliance for Young Artists and Writers and is the longest-running, most prestigious recognition program in the United States for creative teenagers. Gold Key awards are given to students whose work demonstrates the highest levels of originality, technique, and personal vision. Gold Key artwork is forwarded to New York for national adjudication. Students are recognized with Gold Key lapel pins and certificates. Silver Key awards are given to students whose work demonstrates achievement worthy of recognition on the regional level. Students are recognized with Silver Key lapel pins and certificates.
On February fourth, Wauwautosa East and West Future Business Leaders of America teams competed in the regionals at Muskego High School. This conference had well over five hundred participants from around the area. Students advancing to state competition from Wauwautosa East include seniors Patrick Nellen, Zach Peterson, and Jake Robarge in banking and financial systems; Lorenzo Zebul, business communication; Livy Crago, Emily Johnson and Angela Gilman, business ethics; Zach Adam, Sam Klein, and Colin Tratchold, management information systems; Mariah Halverson, Matty Packard and Josh Smentek, marketing; and Joe Telder and Quinn Paszkowicz, business financial plan. Juniors advancing to state are Jake Christensen and Derek Wolf, global business; Valerie Armstrong, a sophomore, will advance in word processing, too. Freshmen advancing are Will Strobusch, business financial plan, and A.J. Peel, Ethan Telder and Jack Telder, for network design. Wauwautosa West students advancing to state include sophomores Nolan Kresnik, Mitchell Mers, and Oliver Niles, digital video production; and junior Aaron Stapleton in public speaking -- I'm sorry, public speaking, too. In addition, the following students from Wauwautosa East placed in the top ten. Seniors Maggie Elliott, business communication; Catherine Oliniechuk, Lydia Taylor, and Isabella Boupray, emerging business issues; Anthony Horn, Jen Carger, and Meg Zebul, entrepreneurship; Tommy Rorbeck, sports management; and junior Kevin Carricker, tech concepts. Sophomores include Carly Amstat, business law; Sam Murphy, impromptu speaking; Brian Hendrix and Lucas Poe, intro to tech concepts; Joey Dower and Bobby Johnson, networking concepts; and Leah Spankowski, word processing, one. Two freshmen also placed. They are Quinn Boupray, intro to business communication, and Henry Utchig, intro to business. West students placing in the top ten, juniors Sammy Schaaf, business procedures; Joel Zembles, healthcare administration; Alexis Fax and Darby Slade, marketing.
Twenty-seventh, two thousand twelve, at seven P. M. I'm Mike Meyer, sitting in for President Lois Weber this evening. Today, a tragedy befell one of our families in the school district with loss of a child in an accident. As we take our customary moment of silent reflection, we ask that you remember them in this difficult time. Mrs. Galante, please, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Fee?
Here.
Mr. DeRose?
Here.
Mr. Croner?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Here.
Mrs. Randall?
Here.
And Mrs. Weber?
Excused. Members of the Wauwautosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. Is there anyone present who would like to comment on a non-agenda item? Seeing that there are no non-agenda comments, we will move into the scheduled business for the evening. The next item is approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda which Board members would like to remove for separate discussion and action? Seeing no such requests, the Chair will entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, Mrs. Randall moved, and Mrs. Milfeld seconded. Mrs. Galante, please, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Fee?
Excuse me, I believe we're required to have public comment on--
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for that correction. Is there any comment on the consent agenda from the public? Seeing none, now, Mrs. Galante, please, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. DeRose?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Tonight, we have recognition readings from Mr. DeRose, Mrs. Fee, and Mrs. Randall.
Thank you. Three students from West High School and one from East High School have been named National Merit Scholarship finalists. The four named National Merit Scholarship finalists are all seniors. West, Ellen Curtley, Natalie Mullins, and Alexi Utteck; and East, Tracy C. Johnson. The selection of approximately eight thousand three hundred National Merit Scholarship winners from the group of finalists is currently in progress. Scholarship winners will be notified in March. The National Merit Scholarship Program, started in nineteen fifty-five, is an academic competition for recognition and scholarships.
Students from Wauwautosa East and West High Schools and Longfellow and Whitman Middle Schools have won several Scholastic Art Regional Awards for two thousand eleven, twelve. The award-winning art will be on display at the Milwaukee Art Museum, March fourth, two thousand twelve. East High School seniors winning Gold Keys are Isabella Boupray for her photo portfolio, Mu Da for her three-D portfolio, and two for Zora Martin for art portfolio and jewelry. Winning individual Gold Keys were seniors Aaron Zarnecki, photography, and Raven Kosterzua, and I apologize, for photography; juniors Jillian McBride and Akeela Roberson, digital art, and Austin Woods, photography; sophomores Bryant Kimball in painting, and freshmen Sizley Bowman and Anthony Nash in drawing. Sarah Tremonte, a senior, and Hannah Jansen, a freshman, won a Silver Key in the photo category. East High School art teachers include Kelly Frederick Meiser, Kim Haller, Jim Smesert, Kathy Moss Reeves, and Barb Murray. Gold Key winners from West High School are seniors Megan Canfield, mixed media, Nicole Cunichello, sculpture, and Sammy Sandrin, photography; junior Jordan Lannis, mixed media; and sophomores, all in drawing, Talia Garido, Ben Ochloff, and Devon Voravong. West High School teachers are Jessica Belitch, Selena Maris, and Kathy Moss Reeves. Longfellow Middle School Gold Key winners, all in the drawing category, are eighth grader Sam Christensen, Matty Janisch, Taya Kraus, and Travis Olark, and seventh grader B. Leach. Eighth graders Maya Martin in digital art and Savannah Reynolds in drawing won Silver Keys. Longfellow art teachers include Megan Mackay and Michelle Seegert. Whitman Middle School seventh graders Rick Seer and Aaron Shout are Gold Key winners in the oil pastel drawing category. Eighth grader Jordan Pape won a Silver Key in the mixed media beeswax and paint category. Kathy Moss Reeves is the art teacher at Whitman. Wauwautosa students also received -- excuse me, honorable mention awards. Wauwautosa East High School honorable mention awards went to seniors Heather O'Keefe in photography and Sidney Rabishaw in mixed media; juniors Francesca Ludwig in photography and Eunt Powell in design; and sophomores Natalie Shudrowitz and John Serrano in drawing. Wauwautosa West High School recipients were juniors Kelly McGalligan in photography and Aaron Rittenhour in drawing; sophomore Rachel Polley in drawing, and senior Lydia Smertz in jewelry. Longfellow Middle School eighth grader Brian Stoffel received an honorable mention award in digital art. Founded in nineteen twenty-three, the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards are awarded by the Alliance for Young Artists and Writers and is the longest-running, most prestigious recognition program in the United States for creative teenagers. Gold Key awards are given to students whose work demonstrates the highest levels of originality, technique, and personal vision. Gold Key artwork is forwarded to New York for national adjudication. Students are recognized with Gold Key lapel pins and certificates. Silver Key awards are given to students whose work demonstrates achievement worthy of recognition on the regional level. Students are recognized with Silver Key lapel pins and certificates.
On February fourth, Wauwautosa East and West Future Business Leaders of America teams competed in the regionals at Muskego High School. This conference had well over five hundred participants from around the area. Students advancing to state competition from Wauwautosa East include seniors Patrick Nellen, Zach Peterson, and Jake Robarge in banking and financial systems; Lorenzo Zebul, business communication; Livy Crago, Emily Johnson and Angela Gilman, business ethics; Zach Adam, Sam Klein, and Colin Tratchold, management information systems; Mariah Halverson, Matty Packard and Josh Smentek, marketing; and Joe Telder and Quinn Paszkowicz, business financial plan. Juniors advancing to state are Jake Christensen and Derek Wolf, global business; Valerie Armstrong, a sophomore, will advance in word processing, too. Freshmen advancing are Will Strobusch, business financial plan, and A.J. Peel, Ethan Telder and Jack Telder, for network design. Wauwautosa West students advancing to state include sophomores Nolan Kresnik, Mitchell Mers, and Oliver Niles, digital video production; and junior Aaron Stapleton in public speaking -- I'm sorry, public speaking, too. In addition, the following students from Wauwautosa East placed in the top ten. Seniors Maggie Elliott, business communication; Catherine Oliniechuk, Lydia Taylor, and Isabella Boupray, emerging business issues; Anthony Horn, Jen Carger, and Meg Zebul, entrepreneurship; Tommy Rorbeck, sports management; and junior Kevin Carricker, tech concepts. Sophomores include Carly Amstat, business law; Sam Murphy, impromptu speaking; Brian Hendrix and Lucas Poe, intro to tech concepts; Joey Dower and Bobby Johnson, networking concepts; and Leah Spankowski, word processing, one. Two freshmen also placed. They are Quinn Boupray, intro to business communication, and Henry Utchig, intro to business. West students placing in the top ten, juniors Sammy Schaaf, business procedures; Joel Zembles, healthcare administration; Alexis Fax and Darby Slade, marketing; Hannah Fritsch and Mandy Homer, global business; Christina Meyer, Jenny Seiberg and Laurel Stutz, management decision-making; Brittany Gonzalez, hospitality management; and sophomore Bryce Rotacel, accounting one. The business teachers for the Wauwautosa School District are Leah Gustafson at East and Dan Prothrow and Brad Schuster at West. FBLA is the national organization for all secondary school students participating in business education programs. It functions as an integral part of the instructional program of the business education curriculum in secondary schools.
Thank you for those readings of recognition. Congratulations to all of these young people. It is always so special that our young people regularly demonstrate such a broad spectrum of scholarship, artistry, and achievement in so many different paths and directions. It makes this job kind of a fun job, to always hear these things. All right, so now we'll move to action items. Mrs. Milfeld, please, will you read the action item concerning special education open enrollment?
Yes, thank you. It is recommended that the School Board approve the special education open enrollment recommendation for determining space available in special education for new open enrollment students in a building to be a caseload of one per five for special education teachers and one per fifteen for speech and language pathologists assigned to the building, as presented at our February thirteenth meeting, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion from the Board? Is there any comment from the community? Seeing no discussion and comment, please, Mrs. Galante, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. DeRose?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Four reports to the Board this evening from the Superintendent. We have a report covering the Forest Exploration Center charter school concept. Dr. Earl?
Thank you. Tonight, we have with us John G., who is the Executive Director of the Forest Exploration Center. John comes to us with a lot of experience with charter schools. He was recently spent, I think, three to four years as the Executive Director of the Wisconsin Charter School Association. He also has experience as a central office administrator, a school board member, and probably a lot of other things that I'm not completely aware of. But John had approached me regarding this charter school, and he's going to give the background for it, but really, the purpose of what we're trying to do is introduce it to the Board and ultimately leading to a recommendation down the road to have the School Board be the authorizer for this charter school. One of the -- excuse me, one of the next steps would be proceeding toward a planning grant and getting approval of a planning grant. So at this time, I'll turn it over to John and let him share some information.
Thank you very much. It's really a pleasure to be here. As Dr. Earl said, I was on a school board once in Colorado. I think it's about the most important thing you can do in the community. It's really fun to be here. One part of my background that Dr. Earl didn't mention, but it's relevant to this, before I came to Wisconsin, I spent about a decade in Silicon Valley on entrepreneurship, developing high-tech companies. I ran a business incubator for NASA where we took young people who wanted to start companies, people in their twenties and so forth, helped them do that. And that was sort of during the period of time the Internet took off, so many of those companies ended up very successful. So, that's part of my passion, and one of the reasons I got interested in charter schools and schools again, is because I think charter schools are the kind of analog Silicon Valley startups. They're really a way to introduce innovation, and that's what I want to talk to you about tonight. This Forest Exploration Center, and I think some of you have heard of it before, came about ten years ago as an idea, when the county of Milwaukee sold this piece of property, which is this green piece right here. They sold this sixty-seven acre piece of property to the state, who in turn has it under the guidance of the Department of Natural Resources. And the idea, over the last ten years, was to try to bring together a concept to the urban parts of the state that would interest people in forest -- in the forest environment and forestry in general, because Wisconsin is a world leader, actually, in forestry. Fifty, sixty, seventy years ago, almost all the forests in the state were gone. And at that time, the state decided to really get involved in forestry and try to return them, and now there are actually more forests now than there was ten years ago or twenty years ago. And it's a great success story in Wisconsin. However, the original idea, which was sort of a large, sort of sixty thousand square foot museum for forestry, really isn't resonant with the needs of people in Milwaukee and Wauwautosa and the surrounding areas, where there's a much greater interest in educational issues. So, we are proposing to put a charter school inside of this center. So what you really have to look at is the Forest Education Center is a kind of community school within which there would be a charter school. And the kids in that charter school wouldn't -- we're really not just saying this as a metaphor, this is a real thing. They would be the curators of this forest, the stewards of this forest, the curators of this facility I'm going to tell you about. But I don't want you to look at this as just this sixty-seven acre parcel, which I think a lot of you are familiar with, fifty-seven acres of this -- of this wood, is the educational experience will take place throughout the entire county grounds. The county grounds, Milwaukee County grounds, are unique in the United States. They're unique historically, culturally, socially. They're unique as an educational opportunity with the community gardens, beekeeping, the history of the asylums, the graves that are there, the wildlife is there. You could go on and on about the experiences that people could have in this area educationally. So, while the school and the center will be put on that piece of property, I really want you to look at that entire forest, that county grounds, as part of the educational experience. The other unique thing about what we're trying to do is the sponsor organizations. This project is really dear to the hearts of some very important and resourceful organizations, starting with the Department of Natural Resources, including the Milwaukee Metropolitan Sewage District, the American Forest Foundation, the Milwaukee Zoological Society, and on and on. And these organizations are not just going to be asked to sort of support the charter school. In theory, they're going to put real domain experts, real scientists, and real professionals in that school to mentor kids, to help augment the education in that school. They're going to go out and find resources for that school, financial and otherwise, so that this will be a very rich experience. And that's part of the unique thing, is bringing a unique set of facilities, partners, and educational resources into one place. So that's sort of the overall background of the site. Now, this is going to be a project-based school, what I call an enhanced project-based school. And I have to talk for a second about what that means. Nowadays, and project-based schools are very popular throughout the state of Wisconsin, and in fact, we have some of the best schools in the state are project-based, and they're as good as any in the United States. And there tends to be a sort of theory that you either have a student-led project school or you have a teacher-led project school. Well, we're going to have a blend. And the reason we're going to have a blend is one of the problems with discovery-based learning in general is that if you have students of all different levels of ability, they're not all equally prepared to enter in discovery-based learning. And so what we are going to have a dedication to is giving every child the foundation and the requirements, so that they will have the knowledge and the background to succeed at these projects. There has been an approach sometimes where you sort of dumb the projects down instead of raise up the kid. And what we're dedicated to do is we're going to raise all the kids to a level where they can benefit from this kind of unique project-based, discovery-based learning. The school is going to have a forest theme. The forest environment includes almost all the kind of STEM, environmental, social, political, and cultural issues that make up education, so that'll be a kind of theme that runs throughout the curriculum. But it will be a STEM-focused school. There is a tremendous need in this state to increase the number of kids that are going to post-secondary education into the sciences and engineering. And particularly, to do that with a diverse population. If you take that map that I showed you where our site is, and you drew a five-mile radius around that site, you would encompass the most diverse demographics socially, racially, and economically in the state of Wisconsin. And when you take students of all those different backgrounds and put them in together into education in a truly integrated environment, what you do is you challenge peer relationships. You challenge the peer view and peer relationships of the rich and the poor kids, of all the different racial groups, and that creates a person who is able to go on to education and live in society, make a major contribution. So, this diversity issue, which I'll return to later, is very important. Now, when I say it's a STEM school, it's going to have a heavy science and engineering mathematics curriculum, that does not mean that it is not going to be a literacy-based school and it's not going to be an art school. Because you cannot be successful in STEM careers if you don't have an appreciation for the arts and you don't have a very strong literacy background. Particularly when it comes to the issue of design, which is a major part of engineering, you really have to appreciate art, you have to be a literate person. So, it'd be a middle school through a high school, there'd be a bit stronger focus on the literacy aspect of the middle school, a bit stronger focus on the STEM in high school, but it's basically a liberal arts education. It is a charter school, and as all of you know-- And as all of you know, the idea of a charter school is it gets a contract with the school district, there's a certain level of autonomy to the school. It is by state law, taken 80% of the regular school district regulations, the state regulations for schools, charter schools do not have to adhere to those. And the purpose of that is so they can innovate, so they can do something new and different. But in exchange for that, a charter school takes on really strict accountability. That is, what we're going to say is this school, over the period of the five years, if it gets a five-year contract, is going to perform at an equal or better level than the average of the school district and the average of the state. And there's no point in having a charter school if it isn't performing at a superior level. I mean, it's the goal of this school over a period of five years to become a model school in the United States of this type. I said earlier that diversity is a core value. This site is very exciting because of its nearness to that kind of diversity. In fact, the major idea that drives forestry is the concept that a forest that is diverse is healthy, and a forest that's not as diverse is open to disease and problems. And so the concept of diversity is important throughout the curriculum in school, it's important in the makeup, not only of the students, but of the teaching and other staff in the school. But we will try to focus on that five-mile area. We won't just sit back and wait for people to apply. We will actually make a concerted and affirmative effort to recruit kids from all different groups to the school, so that we, we're not just paying lip service to the university idea. As I said, it'd be a middle and high school, would eventually have up to 175 students. We would have a defined school year, but what we would like to do is extend that year so there would be enrichment sessions, what we call intercessions, not just for the students going to that school, but for students throughout your school district. And that gives, so there would be something going on there with the school education all year long. As I said, it's a discovery inquiry-based school, but kids don't just work, there are no classrooms per se. As you'll see from the facility, it's a facility of all sorts of things, all sorts of spaces that are opportunities for learning. And it's indoors and it's outdoors, and it's on that 67-acre site, and it's all over the county grounds. So kids learn, in fact, a significant amount of time of these kids will be spent at the zoo, with the Zoological Society, where they have access to a measurable amount of resources. Students will work in fabrication spaces, in labs, exhibit spaces, performance spaces. There'll be quiet spaces. They won't be at a desk with a big computer. Every one of these kids will have access to production computers, but they'll work on these kind of tablets, like iPads, where they really can take that, their education with them, have access to all that information. There'll be licensed teachers there, of course, but we're going to augment that teaching with experts from all these organizations that come from all over the state. For example, and we tell the story all the time, when MMSD was doing these flood basins, they had to protect the Butler Snake. And in order to do that, they went out and found the single most expert person in the United States on that snake, who taught them how to catch all the snakes. They caught all those snakes, they kept them for three years, they put them back when they finished the work, and now they're actually tracking the migration of those snakes as they move through the various properties. All of that constitutes an educational project. And that person, that expertise would come to this school and work with these kids. And I could give you many examples of that. So we see it as a lab school, not just for 175 students, but for all of the students in your entire district, for all of the teachers in your entire district. And you'll see from the facility, it's much bigger than a school, so there's plenty of opportunity for other activities to be going on there. These are some of the kind of spaces that will be in this, in this center. First, there'll be a FabLab. I don't know if you're familiar with the FabLab that's out at Fox Valley Technical College. FabLabs were the idea of MIT, and there's only two commercial ones in the United States, the one in Appleton is one of those. And basically, what a FabLab is, is it's computer-driven equipment. It's driven by computers that you design, you put, you use design software, you tell the computer what you want these machines to make, and it'll make it. And you ask the question, what can it make? Anything you can imagine. It can make stuff out of wood, it can make stuff out of metal, it can make stuff out of wax. It can drive dozens and dozens of different kinds of machines. It literally can build anything. At MIT, they've used FabLabs to build small houses. So I mean, when I say it can build anything, it can build practically anything. We're going to have a multimedia lab with really high-end production equipment, so people can produce digital, multimedia content, audio, visual, all kinds, websites, movies, whatever it's going to be, where they can do high-end production stuff. Now, all of this, all of this space is also open to the public. This is a community school. So when I say that kids and families going to school are curators of these facilities, they will put on exhibits in this facility. They will help people learn how to use the stuff that's in this. There's going to be a wood lab, which is an environment for woodworking, with really high-end machines in that, that are at the level of professional. There's going to be a portable sawmill, we hope, with some solar drying kilns, and that's a micro enterprise. There's a problem with people discarding wood all over the state because of the bugs that kill it, it's being put into landfill. If it was brought out to a site like this, you can turn that wood into all of the things that you see, it can be floors, it can be furniture, I could name 50 different things that you can make out of that wood, and people will pay for that. There's going to be a community science center with wet and dry labs. It's going to be, there'll be software there, which is called a virtual lab, so you can do experiment, digital experiments. There's going to be a lot of exhibition space, the things that these students produce will be part of the exhibits. But we're going to reach out to organizations all over the state, all over the United States, to come and put on exhibitions there. And again, having the kids have an opportunity to curate that space. And then finally, there's going to be a theater, an arena, with arena seating and a stage, a large lobby so that people can have events there, we can put on presentations. One element of the Forest Exploration Center will be a research capacity, where we're going to give up fellowships to get professional researchers to come there, and part of their obligation will be to make their research available to the public and the students through these kinds of presentations. This will be about a 30,000-square-foot facility. This, this school, as I, as I said, is going to, is going to have a goal to be extremely high-performing. We think that we can perform on whatever the state mandated tests are at that time and equal to the district and state level for like-student populations. We intend to use a form of interim assessments. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the book Driven by Data by Paul Van Rixtoyo, but he has a fascinating concept of if you just wait to give kids whatever the end result test is. It's like, it's like being a basketball coach, and at the end of the game, you cover the scoreboard, you don't know whether you're winning or losing, so you don't know whether to foul the guy to keep the game going or let the clock run out. Well, if you, if you set up a series of interim assessments that are designed at the same level of rigor as the end result test, and the teachers are able to tell how each child answered each question, can't do it maps, then you can do a teaching and reteaching plan right down to the level of an individual learning plan for each kid, which is the focus of this. So that will be part of the performance. And then, of course, in project-based schools, having an assessment of student portfolios, what you want to see is students doing ever increasingly sophisticated work. In fact, the way in which in a project-based school, teachers are evaluated, is how sophisticated the student work is. And so this issue of having real evaluations of student portfolios, not just by teachers, but by peers and by domain experts, is also part of the way in which you gear performance. What we're interested in, and we're going to try to make a partnership with UWN, particularly because of the engineering school that's going right across the street, but we want to make partnerships with secondary institutions all around the area, because we want to help promote these kids into careers, not jobs. And it doesn't mean they have to go to four-year colleges, the tech college system in this state is phenomenally good. But what we want to do is we want to have a career center and an internship program inside this center, and these partner organizations will provide internships to these kids, opportunities to support them when they go to post-secondary education, so that they can, in fact, fill in this state these careers, in the environmental services, in forestry, but also in the other areas of science, engineering and technology. This is a really important issue in Wisconsin. I gave a speech the other day to the Woodland Owners Association, and I have to say, when you looked out at the audience, the audience was pretty long in the tooth. And you have to ask the question, who's going to take their seat in 10 years? Because we're not building an interest among people, particularly urban people, in these subject matters sufficiently to fill those seats of those people. And that's what the purpose of this is, is to, is to fill your seats, is to fill DNR seats, is to fill MMSD seats, is to fill the university seats with teachers, and to put teachers into your school district. So that's actually one of the most important aspects of this, because what we know, particularly with poor kids, they may get into post-secondary education, but they don't finish, because they lose, they lose, they lack support through the entire process. Okay, so that's the general idea. What we're doing right now is trying to put together the planning grant to DPI. That will, of course, come in front of you, we're probably 80, 85% through the draft of it. We want to do this because we hope that this facility will be built and ready to go within three years. As you know, DPI has a fairly significant amount of funds to support charter school planning, but those are going to run out pretty soon. It was a determinant grant, we want to put, put it in for this. We think this is a unique opportunity. I, I do have to tell you, we have to go out and raise money for this. This is a vision that we have to back up with getting people to write checks. The first phase of this is going to cost around $12 million. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you for the dynamic presentation. A lot of energy here, well-considered plan you have. Board, does anyone have any questions or comments? Mr. Croner?
Thank you. That was a very nice presentation.
Thank you.
My first question is going to be a process question, maybe for you or Dr. Earl. This is not going to be a school that's an instrumentality of the district, correct?
Well, that's not, it may well be. We haven't got to the stage to even determine that yet. What we want to do is determine what the right vision is, what the best education is. And I don't think at the end of the day, it matters. This school can meet every piece of the vision that I just put out, whether it's an instrumentality or non-instrumentality. Point is, what was going to constitute the best school, that's only going to be the issue. So we haven't even discussed that yet.
So the planning grant would come before us if it were an instrumentality, but it would, you would just submit?
Well, what we're trying to do, and I know the people at DPI very well, they want you to check a box, and I, you know, what's the point of a planning process if you check a box before you've done the plan? We have a planning committee. Dr. Earl came to the first meeting, and Beth is not here tonight, she's going, she was at the meeting. It is a tremendous planning committee. We have people from the Zoological Society on it, we have people from universities all over the place. And I want that process to go through the period it goes through before we make fundamental decisions about the structure of the school. Now, if they don't let us do it, we'll check the instrumentality box, and if we want to discuss the other alternative later, we can do that.
Okay. It's a tremendous idea. I mean, it's a very, very impressive idea. What, at this point, what is your anticipated opening date?
Well, when, when we get a, a planning grant, they let you start expending the money in August, and you're supposed to open a school within 12 to 18 months of getting that grant. Now, the school wouldn't start with 175 kids, we're looking at starting with maybe 50 or 60, and, you know, if we miss a schedule, we can probably find some alternative spacing for the schools for a year. But we're, we're on a three-year, from tonight, we're on a three-year track to try to get this open. Now, that's aggressive, but if you're familiar with the development they did in Madison called the Resilient Cities Research Center, which is a big environmental center with a school in it, and it's got a 30,000-square-foot facility, and they raised $10 million, they did that in three years. So, you know, I, we, I think we can do it.
I guess my last question, the $12 million figure that you mentioned, is that expended costs like through five years, or what would you need to start up?
No, well, I, I want to get at least the basis of the whole vision. I don't want to do it so incrementally, because my experience in doing this is if you put one piece there, then, you know, it's just pulling teeth to add the pieces. So that 10, 12 million builds the first 30,000 square feet, which is that set of facilities. Now, it's actually more than that, because if you look at all those facilities, a lot of equipment in there. And we're going to try to get people to donate. Again, this thing in Madison, they were very successful at getting tremendous amount of donations of equipment and gear and stuff like that. So when I say a FabLab, well, if you went out and bought all the kind of equipment you would need a FabLab, that's probably a million dollars right there. But I think I can get industries throughout this state to donate that equipment, when they know that people all over the state, all over the community are going to learn how to use it.
Okay, well, thank you. I'm from the Pacific Northwest, so forestry concept is pretty, pretty good one for me, I have to say, so.
Great stuff.
Nice presentation, thank you.
Mrs. Randall?
I'm glad you have a background in charter schools. As you know, you have a choice of authorizers. You could go with a higher education institution.
No, not in Wauwatosa. The, the, UWM and the city of Milwaukee can authorize charter schools, but only inside the city limits of Milwaukee.
Really?
Yeah. And, and we could, I mean, for example, we could do this project in Havenswood, which is another DNR property, and they have facility. And, and we want to involve the Milwaukee School District, and I've already talked to Dr. Thornton about this a little bit, but we want the Wauwatosa School District to authorize this school. The site is inside of Wauwatosa, and you have a highly effective and functioning school district. Excuse me, wow, this is a loud one. So what we want to try to do is maybe have an educational services agreement or some kind of outreach to, to Milwaukee, because we want people from all over the area to use the facility, but, but I'm very comfortable having the Wauwatosa School District do this.
Okay, that was my question, how did you choose an authorizer? I mean, you do have other options.
Yeah, I mean, and, and there's a, there's a sort of rare option that you can also have the CISA do it, but, you know, MPS, which has phenomenal challenges, as everybody knows, so I, and I've worked greatly with them, is a very difficult environment, because it lacks a certain amount of stability and has so many other challenges, to focus on a project like this would be very difficult. So I, I think, I, just from what little I know about the Wauwatosa School District, but I have visited before, you have charter schools, in fact, you've had, you have one really great elementary school. I want, I think this project needs to take place in a place where the school board and the school itself has stability. And a good reputation.
Yeah, I, I think this is a great opportunity for our district. Regarding the location, the county grounds are an amazing resource, and like you said, not everybody knows everything about it. It's just so, there are so many aspects to it, and any ways that we can find to use and preserve that, because it's been a struggle to preserve both the land and the buildings, and any opportunities that we have as a community, as a society.
It is a struggle, which is why this property ended up in DNR's hands, because they wanted to develop it, and the public went up in arms.
Right, right, right. So I'm very excited to learn more and move ahead. Thank you.
Any other? Mrs. Muufeld?
Thank you. Yes, this is very exciting.